I'll call the November nineteenth meeting of the Kingston Springs Board of Commissioners to order. Could everybody please rise and face the flag?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debbie, could you pull the roll?
Corlou.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Langley.
Here.
Remy.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
Alright, we have a forum. Everyone's seen the minutes and they've been circulated. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Confirmation of the agenda. Everyone's had a chance to look over the agenda. Are there any additions that we need to make to this agenda? Did we strike the... Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Nine B is a resolution for a Safe Routes School project. I think we were waiting on some specifics for that project and we wanted to try and push that to the December meeting.
Okay. Most of you approved the agenda?
Um, I don't know if you want to add to discuss the supplement.
Oh, that is a good point. We add, um... Yeah, nine G, discussion of signage for the buildings. Anthony Campbell sign. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Did you miss it? I think it was one. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Announcements from the commissioners. I'll start with you, Gary. You have anything?
I don't have anything.
Bob?
Yeah, no, I'm saying...
We're both the last, bud.
I don't make life for a while. I'd like to plug the ARC. I saw in the advocate last week that the ARC is in full swing with Angel Tree. There's lots of places you can pick up angels and donations and also they're in need of canned goods for the season.
Gordon, do you have anything?
Hang on. I think we've got some information on it, but for the work that the fire department and the city hall did for the ISO rating...
Yes.
Which affects every resident in this city. I think that everyone should be appreciative of that effort because it means a lot of dollars and cents in just insurance premiums, just nothing else. And I think it... I've noticed a lot of work's been done on the hydrants and new paint and things, so it looks really nice. So I would like to... For you to pass that on, Mike.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alright. Community info. Would anyone like to come and address the commission? All you need to do is step up and state your name and address and then you're free to address the commission. Come on up, Scott.
My name is Scott Sampson. I live at 1204 CC Road. I have four issues, questions, comments, suggestions maybe. First one is, I saw an advocate three, four weeks ago maybe that Pgram was awarded a grant for their fire department. It's assistance to a firefighter grant. Just wondering if our department ever applies for those. They need an answer tonight. I was just kind of wondering if that would be something that our fire department might be able to apply for. The next topic, the city limit signs. I was wondering if you would consider replacing those with something a little bit more friendly? When it says Kingston Springs, building permits required, seems kind of unfriendly. Maybe just Kingston Springs, welcome, population. Another issue, is it possible that any of these local businesses might be interested in doing a adopt a highway program? Where the sign is out there, their name is on the sign, twice a year maybe they go through, pick up garbage along the roads. And the last thing, the multimodal grant that you're applying for. I'm all for the phase one, as long as you don't have to raise property taxes. I think it's a great idea. I was at the meeting a week ago that Mike and Jeff did. Looks wonderful, as long as you don't have to raise taxes to pay for it. And that's it.
Alright. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the... See, you came all the way out tonight. You don't have anything to say?
We're saving it up.
Saving it up, okay. Alright. Onto the consent agenda. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of running you through a couple of things. First, Commissioner Langley had already mentioned the ISO rating for the fire department. We did maintain our rating, which was pretty exciting. I think back in the spring, we had got kind of a provisional status. That would've knocked us down one level. And they asked us to submit an improvement plan, some things that we could change as far as procedures, deployment of equipment, training, that sort of thing. So we typed up a plan. I didn't. The firemen typed up a plan, addressing, I think there were like seventeen specific things they wanted to do. And they made some progress on that plan. The plan was accepted. And then we submitted a mid-year kind of update to ISO saying, alright, these are the steps we've already taken. And so they accepted that plan, credited us some points, and we maintained our level. We issued a press release on that and I know the firemen appreciated the thanks from the community. The next thing are a couple of public works things. I almost sent you guys a notice about this, but it happened yesterday and I figured, you know, we're waiting tonight. There was a sinkhole that kind of developed yesterday morning on Harborview Trail. This is in a culvert that goes right between the farmer's market and the fieldhouse next to the middle school. And pretty much what it is, there's a culvert underneath there and there had been some fill and then the road. And the fill is gone, kind of opened up a cavity. And when a big rain, you know, event like we had yesterday happened, you tend to find out where your cavities are, so... We had a sinkhole. It just kind of only impacts, I think, most of that lane. It doesn't go all the way across the road, but what we spent today doing was we had three-quarter sized gravel delivered. We had some new culvert sections delivered. And they'll be cutting on the road tomorrow, probably cutting the both sides and shutting the road down tomorrow and replacing the culvert and backfilling, that sort of thing. This is worth it, scheduled for tomorrow. The second thing was, we had been working with the county highway department in expanding our salt barn. This was a project that I guess had been talked about for a little while. I don't know if you heard about it, but pretty much the county had been storing all their salt in Ashland City. So when they come down here and they go to the ranchettes or they're in Pgram, you know, they run out, they have to go all the way back up to the county seat, refill, come back. This gives them some added storage, added capacity here on the south end. It does us as well. We've got our salt on order. It should be here, I think, any day. But pretty much, this is an expanded barn that's a little bit easier for our guys to use and give us more capacity. The steel beams on the side actually came from the guard rail on Brush Creek Road, so we were able to recycle some of those materials. The next thing on my report was just J C V D met this month. And they approved, they approved five hundred dollars. I should wind up with a package full of five hundred dollars worth of stamps. I got the actual stamps from them. And then at their last meeting, they said, okay, let's go ahead and give them up to seven hundred and fifty dollars more. So we have authorization from them to cover everything that included sending out, survey, and then return addresses. I just needed some guidance from you guys that you wanted to do both. Of course, I know you told me last week, but they asked that I come back before you. This was... And I was at that meeting as well, just basically, you know, they left it up to us as to whether or not we wanted to put return stamps on the envelopes. And they said that they would be willing to, you know, there was a vote with... And they were willing to fund all the postage for us up until that point, so... Do we need, do you think, a motion to do both, or... Would you mind? So do we have a motion to do both, or to do return postage as well?
Motion to do the return postage.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you. Those will end up being stuffed and I think we're going to get them out with the accompanying press release and that sort of thing, I think, on Monday. There was also a Parks Board meeting. Well, I'll come to Parks Board later. Planning Commission did not, yeah, they did not meet this month. They are going to be meeting next month. This is, I know I had brought in kind of the GIS, kind of overhead view. There's the storage locker facility on East Kingston Springs and then there's the giant lot next to it. That property owner has bought two lots behind it. So it's 127 and 129 East Kingston Springs Road. The front one that's been cleared, adjacent to the road, is Zone C2. It's Zone Commercial. The lots behind it are Zoned R1. So he has asked to change the zoning from R1 to R3 to get a higher density zone, is what he's asking for. So that'll come before the planning commission in next month. I know we're working on that with the attorney and the planner and the property owner.
Will he be addressing the trash and garbage that's on that property?
I don't know in the rezone that that will come up, but there is a... He, we're waiting on, we're anxiously waiting for a grading plan that will include all of that.
Did he violate any policies in going ahead and doing what he has done to the trees in that landscape?
He asked to remove trees and we said, okay, yeah, remove trees. Unfortunately, his definition of removing trees included disturbing soil and taking the root balls up. And anytime you're moving dirt, that's a grading issue. And that property is such that, you know, there are environmental concerns, there are stormwater concerns, so we need an engineered grading plan that kind of addresses that. And so we're waiting for that engineered grading plan to come back before we can issue a permit. Now, he's asked to do the exact same thing on the two residential lots that he's just bought behind it and we said no. So it's just on that commercial lot, adjacent to the road. At this point, he's already, the damage is pretty well done. Yeah, and I know that we've been working with him because at one point he didn't have silt fences or earth dams up. He's got them up now, but I think with the rain yesterday, there was some damage. I was actually waiting for that hillside to just nice slide. But I think it helped pretty well.
Is there two ponds, is there two ponds there, or just one?
I know there's one.
Okay. Can't quite see it, but... Does he plan to just basically resell the property? Does he, do you know anything about what's happening?
That will come up as part of the rezone. And the way that, I know you guys have done more of these than I have, but the planning commission will have their reading. If they approve, it comes to you guys for a first and second reading, just like how we're going to. Any questions about that property? It's kind of a unique circumstance. I understand he's got a large pile of bricks out there right now that some folks are concerned about. I don't know anything about the bricks, to be honest with you, but I'm just sitting right there. I saw them. The next thing, the Parks Board met and they had been asked, I think, to just incorporate a parks survey that they're going to be using in addition to the resident survey that we're sending out. So I think we're going to use the same envelope and just kind of put it in there with them. They needed some kind of parks-specific kind of related guidance. That was a good thing. There was also some talk about a year-end meeting for the farmer's market. I know they had a good year at the farmer's market, but it's trying to streamline a process for next year and kind of figure that out. Just kind of wrapping up, the resident surveys will probably go out on Monday. Our website was slated to go out, I think, the end of November, early December. I've been working on that a lot last week. And the URL that's on this is actually the, our current configuration of it. Now, it'll be a KingstonSprings.net URL when we move everything over, but this is the working site. And all of the pages are kind of linked, the emails all work, the links to, you know, forms are all, the forms have all been uploaded. It's just that the homepage, we'll be changing up the homepage a little bit. That way people will have easier access to forms and news and that sort of thing. But that's where we're currently at with it. Additional to that, I did kind of mail out, we were hoping to do just a brief biography of each of you, get the residents to know you a little bit better. I've gotten something back from Mr. Corlou and put that up on the site. Take a look at it if you like it and if there's anything else, feel free to get those forms back to me whenever you can. We've been working a lot on multimodal and safe routes and then we'll be getting our Christmas lights up, I think, somewhere around the first of the month. I know we have to have them up by the third for the tree lighting at the library. There's also, I think, I think we're going to see an audit in December. So we're kind of engaging in the year-end sort of activities right now.
Did we add to our Christmas light collection?
No. December fourteenth, we, and this was strictly a low budget, kind of low caliber event, but it's actually the fiftieth anniversary of our election to incorporate as a town. And that's coming up, that's the actual date of the fiftieth anniversary. We're having some really neat little tie-ins with the high school and the middle school who are doing a couple art projects for us. In addition, we're kind of asking residents, they've got old photos, old signs, old stuff. You know, bring it and sit on the other side of the table and show us and tell us what it is and just kind of doing like an open house sort of activity for that. So that's, I know that's what's coming up, what staff is working on. Additionally, you've got some things in next month's meeting. And I think that's it for the managers' report. Do you have any questions of me? If not, you've got the department reports and Debbie has provided a finance report.
Any questions about the finance report while we've got Debbie here? Pretty straightforward this month, I think. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Jennifer, on to the legal report.
I do not have anything specific this month.
Okay. New business, Resolution fifteen dash zero zero nine endorsing application for the, for a fiscal year fifteen, T-Dot Multimodal Access Grant. We have that front of us here.
Mr. Mayor? Just wanted to run you through your packet real quick and then I know some of the design and kind of specific questions. We've got our grant administrator, Matty Cushing, who moved the sign. And we've also got our engineer, Jeff Stevens. Both Matty and Jeff are here and they can kind of get to some deeper thoughts and questions with you if you choose. But I just wanted to run you through what's in this packet real quick. First of all, this is the same grant that you had applied for last year and the process is unchanged in that the first thing that has to happen is the town has to resolve to have a project. And that's what this docket item is. Once that's passed, it has to go through kind of our collection of local transportation officials called the RPO. It has to get approval from them. They approved two projects from each RPO, which is just a subregion of the state. And then those two projects get forwarded on to T-Dot for grant consideration. Now, both us and White Bluff advanced through the RPO and got graded by a T-Dot last year. This year, there's a third applicant. It's Dixon City, White Bluff, and us. So only two of those three cities are going to kind of move on to the next round. The RPO meets here in Kingston on December first. And I think that's good for us. We're just trying to, I guess, work on our application and lineup of politics between now and the first. Beyond that, some of the things about last year's project that came back, these were comments that were given to me from T-Dot on the seventh. This is the second page of this docket item. We're just, it had a high cost to it. There were some questions about the bridge, crossing the bridge and whether the bridge was kind of shovel-ready. There were some also, some, I guess, some issues with all of the verbiage that was in it. It was a hundred and thirty-page application and I think typically they're used to seeing a thirty to twenty-five to thirty-five page application. They just got fatigued when the graders were grading us. There were some things that needed to be emphasized in safety, providing a direct link to the schools, that sort of thing. Just kind of going through this packet, you've got some images that are on the TV that I know Jeff will kind of walk us through. There's also, we had a public input meeting. One of the comments was that the input meeting we claimed in last year's was part of that Blueprint for America event that we did in two thousand and eight. So some of the comments weren't very current. While the oh-eight stuff is important, we had something at Heritage Bank here a couple of weeks ago. And this is the minutes from that. We've also got some things about funding that we can talk about. But I think that's, I think that's the summary of the packet. Jeff, did you want to walk me through the project?
Jeff Stevens, fire engineering, emailed some of these drawings over to Mike so he can set it up for the TV screen, brought some renderings of the project as we want to move forward with it. From the public hearing, we had discussed, I guess, the original concept, where the project would begin at the Kingston Springs Road and it would go south down that corridor to Liven Hills Road, crossing the interstate and stopping at Petro. With comments from the public hearing and comments from T-Dot, they said that, you know, it would be probably the city's best interest to kind of pull back on the big project and look at it as a smaller project. The smaller the project, the smaller the budget number, the better your chances to get awarded money to do the project. When we looked at that, from Kingston Springs Road down to Petro Gas Station, that's about a half mile. If you stop the project at the first on-off ramp near where the Arby's is, that reduces the project pretty much in half. It gets it about a quarter of a mile. And what that, what we found out from that and we ran some, a couple different budget numbers to check this was that the original project was slated to be somewhere nine hundred and something thousand, somewhere under a billion dollars. And by reducing the scope of the project, it worked out to be about five hundred thousand dollars. Funding under this grant, T-Dot provides ninety-five percent of the funding for the project and Kingston Springs, Kingston Springs will be required to provide five percent. So on a five hundred thousand dollar project, the state would fund the majority of that. Kingston Springs would be responsible for somewhere around twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars in local funds. What you'll see there on the GIS aerial is the, where we propose the project now in green, stopping at the interstate, staying north of I-40 and leaving that other area as, in blue, as a potential future project down the road. It shows connectivity along the sidewalk system for Kingston Springs that comes all the way to downtown and connects the elementary school, middle school, and the high school. This little stretch of corridor is a highly commercialized corridor. It presents problems for safety, for pedestrian traffic, for bicycle traffic. The proposed plan that we're looking at would increase safety and would provide, add benefits to the property owners because it would improve connectivity on and off the route. And as we kind of look through the slides right there, you kind of get a rendering of what Liven Hills Road could look like one day if properly funded, where you have sidewalks with grass buffers, landscaping, could be trees, could be bushes. Provides an area in, like in this rendering here, ten-foot wide sidewalk that gives you plenty of room for bicycle traffic, pedestrian traffic, controlled access points for traffic in and out of businesses along that corridor. And kind of tying into that, kind of the same concept, you could look at the same idea and instead of bicyclists and pedestrians sharing the sidewalk, you could also maybe have designated bike lanes with a six-foot wide sidewalk. It's my understanding that Kingston Springs at this current time doesn't have any designated bike lanes, but there are bicyclists that come through this area that they use either Highway seventy or they try to connect through that corridor to get over to Highway one hundred. At the top there, you'll see kind of a planned view rendering from Kingston Springs Road through that corridor to I-40. Our budget estimates are based on that corridor right there. That from the public hearing was discussed as phase one. And that's, we haven't called it phase one out on any of our design maps, but if you hear a phase one, that's what the intent is, that it would stop at just before I-40. And Mike has pretty much all the information that we've generated. And if you need anything, you can email it to you or I can email it to you, but you already have it in the packets.
The last little section of this is just funding and it's, I think it's the last, once the last one, two, it's the last four, three or four pages. Beginning on this side, if it is something that you want to try and phase with a phase one and a phase two and a phase three, this is what the breakdown would be. I think what we had asked for consideration tonight was this phase one. That's a four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar grant request. You know, the city would be responsible for twenty-three thousand of them, so that's about half, a little under half of, I think, what we had been planning for last year. And it, you know, covers us from pretty much Sonic to the bridge. So that's, I guess that's what's on the table when, I guess, when looking at how to fund something like that. This is all money that, you know, we get the invoices, we send them to the state, they give us ninety-five percent and then we have to, you know, pay the rest. So it's not a reimbursement type, which is fantastic. And this is the budget template for, I guess, what we're looking at in a phase one. And I think the last two pages are if you wanted to borrow that twenty-three thousand dollars in last budget. This is what the current interest rate is going from the Tennessee Municipal Loan Fund. Is there anything else about financing?
Alright, do we have a motion to approve Resolution fifteen dash zero zero nine?
Motion to approve Resolution dash fifteen.
No movement. Any discussion on this? Now, we've had Jeff still here. Do we have any questions for Jeff regarding this project? I know we've all discussed it quite a bit over the past few years, a couple of years since we've been thinking about it and I'm still completely one hundred percent on board. I think this is a great project, so...
Thank you. It can look like his renderings, I think, will be absolutely...
Thank you, can look like his renderings, I think, will be absolutely a nice area.
Really well.
And I think we need to do it in phases based upon the money. And I would hate to think we'd have to borrow, borrow the money to do it, so.
And I, you know, borrowing that twenty-three thousand dollars is one option. We also would have the option to just fund it out of the reserve, which is, and of course, it's, it's so far out right now, we don't know exactly what the state of that reserve is going to be at that time, so.
Right.
But, but, you know, you can't beat a ninety-five percent.
And our debt paid down.
That's pretty good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none, resolution passes, all right. Thank you, Jeff. All right, and we have, we're pushing B till next month. Resolution fifteen dash zero one one, asking the Tennessee General Assembly to exempt the town from TCA sixty-seven four dash four, or one fourteen five. Mike can go, this is the hotel tax we've spoken of in the past.
Mr. Mayor.
Just correct our spelling on exempt, please.
Go.
First, very top.
You've got to watch that little red line that appears on your words, Mike. Mr. Mayor, this is item nine C in your packet, and what it is is, there's a, you have the ability to levy a hotel motel tax, whatever that may mean. And what it is, I don't know what year it happened, but there's an option for the county to have that hotel motel tax or the locality, the city, municipality, to have that hotel motel tax. And you cannot have both, it's a one or the other type situation. Unless you ask to be exempted from the TCA saying it's a one or the other situation. So what this is, is a resolution that has to come before this board and approved by over two-thirds of you, at least four votes on this, to take it to our legislators in, on Capitol Hill and ask for a private act to be, to be exempted from the TCA standing. Which means that we can set up our own hotel motel tax legislation. Chatham County this year, on that screen, I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but they collected eighteen thousand dollars this year in hotel motel tax revenue. That's up substantially for them. Typically, they're between twelve thousand and fifteen thousand, now that's county-wide. But they budget for ten thousand and annually get between twelve and fifteen. This year, they got eighteen thousand. So if you're looking at a potential revenue source, those are the type of numbers that are out there. So we have a, a state statute that says that you can either have city or county. This is a ordinance requesting that the private act be issued by the General Assembly to exempt us so that we can set up our own ordinance. I think Jennifer, is there anything that needs to be added?
No, I mean, the county's had it for a while. I, I don't know, there, if, if you look at the code section, it's funny when you read TCA code, you can always tell when, when it's specifically written just for a city because it has a population of fifty thousand up to fifty thousand two hundred. So you know that's specifically some city. And so that's, in essence, what we're asking, and there are some cities that have gotten exempt. And whether or not this will go through, I have no idea, but I guess you don't know until you ask.
We're talking about taking this away from the county or adding an additional tax to it?
Should we, I guess, before we move on to discussion, do we have a motion to approve, sorry, fifteen dash eleven?
Motion to approve Resolution fifteen dash zero one one.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Are we talking about taking this away from the county or we're adding additional tax to the hotels?
This would be an additional, this would be an additional tax. It would be assessed inside city limits to the, the three hotels that we have. The kind of thinking behind it, of course, is trying to find ways to alternatively, you know, continue to provide the same services the city does without overburdening the citizens through the property tax. And this is, this is one option we have. I spoke to Gary Jacob about it, and it's not necessarily a piece of cake to get this through, but it does happen, and it's happened about, I think he said, it's been the ten, ten or so instances where this is, has actually made it through or, or, you know, gone through for municipalities to do this. So, so it's something that, that is doable, and this is the first step in, in doing it. This is the easy step.
Farther in Chatham County, what percentage is this, do you think we donate? What kind of revenue are we talking about generating out of the three that we have?
Ben, there's six. Ben Breakfast, I think, falls under the county ordinance.
Oh, yeah. So a majority of the revenue for the county for the hotels is actually coming from Kingston Springs?
There's two hotels in Ashen City and then a Ben Breakfast, well, the Ben Breakfast is in the county. And I'm not aware of any other ones.
And then there's a Ben Breakfast on Highway seventy, Chickoridge.
And the one hotel in Ashen City is not really a... Tim's laughing over there, it's the, that is the town hotel, it's...
Icet Hotel.
Anyway, we don't have that.
So it seems smart of us to notice that our three hotels or all the revenues being put towards the county as a whole rather than focus more on our community, so.
Now, the funding that goes to the county is going to the Jeff Board, so in theory, some of that is finding its way back here. But this is adding, you know.
In addition.
Yeah, so that it kind of stays locally. And a lot of times when this stuff goes to the General Assembly, I think it's even spelled out in the, in the resolution that it be used for economic development purposes or sort of tourism development purposes, which could be pretty broad, it could be parks, it could be, you know, marketing, it could be economic development.
What is that, tax percentage rate?
They're at five, I think the county's at five.
Five.
And typically, when this thing goes to the General Assembly, it gets, it gets drawn up, and the hotel lobby, you know, has their antenna to it. So they like to see no more than five added to the private act or specifically must be used for economic development or tourism development. So those are stipulations that often get added on when it comes back to us, if it comes back to us.
I think it's a good argument to say if we're, if we elect to do this, at the same time we're looking at the intermodal, it's going to affect them greatly, the improvements that's being made by, by grants. So as a business owner, I would want to have some means of improving my business if I really intend to stay there, and it's another means of attracting somebody that might be a better, make, make them in and build a nicer facility. So I think we ought to go for it if it's any way possible, no guarantees, but it's worth a shot.
Exactly, and our, our state representative has, is open held and is out on this.
That's great.
Which is great, great staff now.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, most of the passes unanimously, so. All right, reappointing Bridget Wilson to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a new term from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen.
Commission.
Did you have an ordinance?
Skip me. Oh, I did, I did skip D. Sorry, we have an ordinance as well. First reading of ordinance fifteen dash zeros one one, amending section thirteen dash one fifty of the municipal code. I almost cut Jennifer, so time to shine out.
Well, that's okay, that's okay. We discussed this last month when Mike and I had, had met and was looking at cleaning up some of the properties, looking at a way to more effectively get reimbursed for those. And this is one way, is that as a city, we can, instead of just putting a lien on the property and hoping it would get paid, we can actually place a lien that would be collected just like a property tax. And if they don't pay, we would have a right to foreclose on that. So all this does is just change that ordinance to add that. And we could do that by state law, but by changing this, it gives notice to property owners that this is in our code, that we have a right to do this, and we could collect the tax if we so chose. So this gives us a little bit more teeth in cleaning up some of these properties and a way to get reimbursed if we're just not out the funds.
Do we have a motion to pass ordinance fifteen dash zero one one on first reading?
So moved.
Second, what's her name? Second. Was that Gary?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Being quiet.
He's never gonna talk again.
Any discussion? Like, we, we talked a little bit about it last time, I think this is, you know, anytime we can refine our, our, our toolbox so that we have, have better ways to do things, I think it's a good thing personally. But if there's anything anyone else would like to add, or any questions you have for Jennifer? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none, ordinance passes, and we need to set a public hearing for the December meeting. And now we can reappoint Bridget Wilson to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a new term from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. Is there anything that you'd like to add to this? I had spoken to her, and she was, she was interested in serving again at all of the meetings that the Board of Zoning Appeals has. I believe it's a commission appointment. I believe so. About to pull up the municipal code quickly here.
Orders only appeals is by the Board of Commission.
All right, do we have a motion to reappoint Bridget Wilson to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Motion to reappoint Bridget Wilson to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then F, approval of secondary meter refunds. I hope we've all had a chance to look these over. Do we have a motion to, to approve the secondary meter refunds?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the final item that we added, nine G, was the sign for Mayor Campbell, who we renamed the offices over there, and I believe you all got an email from Ms. Finch that had the proposed signs. One of them was for the large sign out here, and then one was for the small sign. And then I think you had another option for us, didn't you, Debbie?
Right, and I'm, I'm trying to get in touch with him. Lori actually recommended that maybe out front, where you have the big sign that says City Hall, which is the one that's fourteen hundred dollars. Maybe they could just do a, a small one that would attach and just be right above it that had Tony's name on it. Still kind of feel it'd probably be in that four or five hundred dollar range, but...
And, and my, my thoughts on, on this is that I, I can't imagine as a, as a type of, as Tony has been known to be, that he would want us to, to spend that much money on a, on a sign. I can't imagine. For a fourteen hundred dollar sign. So I, I think the both of the, either the small sign at the front, or I think that Lori's idea would be an excellent idea.
Was that Lori's input currently or from prior?
No, I was talking, she had called and asked me where we were.
Goodness, have her input designed, I like that.
Yeah, and so that's, you know, she, she's good at stuff like that, so she recommended that. And I haven't been able to get back in touch with them, but, you know, I feel like it would probably be in that range. So if, if that's what you want to do, then you need to, because we don't have that budget.
So what range are you speaking of, then?
I think, Mr. Lacy, that we probably could get that in the four to five hundred dollar range. The smaller sign, they quoted me four ninety-five. And it's still going to be a small sign, just instead of being square, it's just going to be oval. So I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be in that range. But I have not been able to contact them yet, so I'm not positive.
Versus, you know, this is fourteen hundred dollars, we're going to replace the whole sign.
Less than five hundred.
Fantastic signs. No, no, no need to replace it at this point.
Sure, we need a motion to move forward?
With the less than five hundred dollar?
Motion to move forward with that.
Well, it's, it's going to be four ninety-five at least, and at least that much.
Motion to move forward.
All right, do we have a motion to, should we, do we need to sign a dollar amount of that? I mean, I don't know.
We need to, I mean, have made the budget.
Yeah, a motion to, wow, Ms. Finch, do you spend up to six hundred dollars on a, on a sign that way?
It's got the word Campbell in there.
Got Campbell in there somewhere. Surplus, right?
Surplus.
You cycle, you cycle a little bit, right?
Yeah, you have to cycle the, the first money.
Can we hang a building permit required right there? All right. Is there, is there a motion to do that? Or I, I guess I made the motion to approve Debbie's, it's been a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, hearing none, all right, most of the passes. All right, monthly discussion, surplus items, twenty-two fluorescent light fixtures. I have a feeling I know where those came from, so. Do we have a motion to surplus these twenty-two fluorescent light fixtures?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Then final thing is the discussion, anyone have anything for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just quickly, I know it's the end of the meeting, but there was a talk, a question about assistance for firefighters grant. This must be where, the newspaper must be the origin of, of the conversations I've had with the chief. But he was, he was interested in that, and I'm kind of familiar with it from, from past days. But what it is, is it's a federal fund run through FEMA that used to have a lot of money in it, smaller departments buy tanker trucks and all sorts of equipment all the time from it. And with the sequester and with, you know, changed administrations, that fund has really dwindled down to where there's really not a ton of statewide allocation for it. So a lot of these departments will buy turnout gear, they'll buy equipment, they'll buy kind of handheld sort of things, portable radios, but not a lot of big-ticket items. I think PEGROM had, had maybe replaced some old SCBA, the breathing apparatus tanks that they had. And the chief and I actually talked, it had to be, I guess, maybe about three weeks ago, about that funding opportunity for us, because we have a line item in our budget, this year's budget dedicated to replacing SCBA tanks. So I have reached out to those folks two days ago and wanted to find out when the next funding opportunity, and that's coming available in a week. So we have had discussions on that, you'll actually probably see something on that in the next couple of months.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, B, I'd like to just maybe ask him, I'm not sure which is correct, but I think that Scott brought up a couple of good points. That city limit sign has always gotten me pretty, pretty tight, too. So if we could put some on the agenda to kind of look at that, maybe for next month or something, what some options are. I know that some of the cities have done a few things differently. Instead of just metal signs, they've put up nicer signs and some landscaping and a few things like that. So, you know, it just, I want to, you know, if we're going to look at something like this, we need to kind of dress up what we've got. And we all know that the permits are required. So I, I think, you know, if we're going to do anything, we talked about this, and in your process of being appointed here, you know, to be welcoming to the community is what we want to do. And I would just like for something like that, maybe you to do some research. Don't want to spend a whole lot of money, but at the same time, there's got to be some ideas out here from some citizens groups, how we can make it more attractive.
And one, one thing that I think that does address that to some degree is actually Debbie's sister repainted the, the sign that we used to have, and it was looking really kind of shabby. It was down there by the Shell Station. And actually, as part of this, I believe there's going to be a replacement of that sign.
That was a Chamber of Commerce, right? That sign.
The sign was...
We didn't give them some money, but it was the Chamber of Commerce that did that.
Uh, uh, that is going to be, is that, that, that was kind of part of doing this, wasn't it, to put that sign back in?
Yeah, we hope to have it a, a nice landscape bed uh with a nice landscape corridor as our, as our gateway. And that is part of the discussion.
Thank you.
I wanna say something about what you just said, uh, well, not that this did any good, but that, that permits required was put on there because there were so many people coming in here, and why, I didn't know that. I didn't know you hadn't had permits to be in the garage, I didn't know you hadn't had a permit. And I'm not too sure that, I still think we oughta, I think we oughta have Kingston Springs, welcome Kingston Springs, and then still maybe had put out that sign individually, just in a couple of places where you come into the city. But, but I, I, I don't know that it helps any people to really know. I mean, you know, you say there's no ignorance of the law, but you know, uh, that's the reason it was done that way. So I'll just give you something about, you know, no matter to me, you know?
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.